Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting on Wednesday, September 18th, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Peg Coniff, here. Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
President.
J.P. Kuzinski.
Here.
William E. Lynch IV.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Tom Pete.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerath.
President.
Okay, we all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I please have a motion for approval of the minutes of September 4th?
To approve the minutes?
Second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I'll be take one abstention from me. Mountain still passes. Okay, public speak time. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for anything other than what's in our public hearings? Now, that being said, we are going to vote under rules on a nuclear arms resolution as well as a migratory children mistreatment resolution, so.
Migratory migrant. They don't.
They don't migrate, yes, thank you. Immigrant children mistreatment, so if anyone might to talk, would like to speak to those topics, this is your opportunity. So if you could just come up and just state your name and address for our record, please.
Hi there. My name is Kim O'Leary, and I am a resident of East Hampton and a member of the Healthy East Hampton Healthy Coalition, and I am the parent rep of our group. We are still active even though we may not be as visible, and we're down to one part-time staff person, but we wanted to give you some information of what we have been doing this past year or two. We have a more responsibility as adults in the community to take care of our youth and to protect our young people. As a coalition, we look at a local and national data, we figure out best practices to address areas of concern and collaborate and support our partners to implement programs, policies, and practices to be as effective as we can in keeping our youth healthy and making good choices to keep them safe. One example right now is we have been hosting house parties to use existing social networks to bring parents together to support each other, get information, and talk about concerns we have for our children and what they face in today's world. Examples vaping, cannabis use, social media, alcohol, stresses of school, and social life. The latest data from Prevention Needs Assessment Survey will be out shortly. We are waiting for the final report, but in peeking at preliminary data, we are already alarmed at the sharp increases in the high school use of vaping and cannabis use. We would love to come back in late fall or winter to give a full presentation of the data once it's out. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everyone is welcome to speak on whatever topic, I just wanted to know for the Roe resolution that will be sent to subcommittee, so there will be additional opportunities to speak, but we'd love to hear if you want, you're here, you'd like to have your point.
Hi, I'm Jessica Hamilton, and I'm a student representative of the Executive Committee Healthy Youth Coalition.
Hi, my name is Maura Bernier, and I am also a student representative of the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. And we are here to give a brief update and to reintroduce our coalition.
We work closely with many sectors of our community and have greatly increased working with our youth in the past year.
We hope to do much more this year with the high school and middle school. This past year has been very concerning with their increase of vaping and the use of cannabis through the high school.
This is concerning as both are very addictive and can affect your brain and body overall. As this is not only happening in our community but yours, it is more important than ever for our coalition to do work and to look out for our youth people and family of East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Amoroso. I'm an East Hampton resident. I also have a terrible cold, so please excuse my voice. I'm here to speak in favor of two things before you tonight. One is for the municipal light plant. I believe that it's important to foster actual competition rather than the non-competition situation that we have right now with Internet in the city. So I think it's good that, and I hope that you'll move forward with that. Similarly, I know it's going to subcommittee, but I would like to speak in favor of the Roe resolution. I think that it's important that because municipal governments are among the most functional governments we have right now, to speak strongly and encourage our higher representatives to act in the best interest of people in this Commonwealth. And fair access to abortion benefits the poor, it benefits youth, and it benefits the most vulnerable people in society, particularly children in foster care who have to go through difficult hurdles to access a right that other people do not. So please consider when the time comes passing this forward, because I believe that it's incumbent upon you to have leadership in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Purdon. I am here representing Nuclear Ban U.S. The resolution before you today is with the intent of sending a message to the state and the country, the rest of the country, that it is once and for all time to ban nuclear weapons from the face of the earth. Currently, we're facing triple existential threats of climate change, inequality, and still nuclear weapons. Climate change gets deservedly so, I think, a lot of attention. Nuclear weapons, they're going to cost $1.7 trillion over 12 years to modernize, at least the U.S.'s arsenal. That money could go a long ways towards the Green New Deal, for example. And that money is also not invested. If you think about it, it's not invested in something that you can use. You have no return on it, because if they're used, you know, we're all gone. So it's essentially thrown away. We could be investing that money into something that actually gives us a livable future. So that's all I want to say. I have a statement from a resident of East Hampton, David Corf. He works with us, he couldn't be here tonight. Dear City Councilors, I am writing today in support of a resolution aligning the city of East Hampton with the U.N. Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. I am sorry that I will be at work and unable to attend the meeting nonetheless. As an East Hampton resident, I am asking you to consider adopting this resolution. The threat of nuclear weapons is clear. These days, it's really not that hard to imagine the possibility of a nuclear attack, yet according to international law, the use of nuclear weapons is illegal. Nuclear weapons make it possible to kill millions of people in a few seconds. Afterwards, their radioactive contamination can cause disfigurement, disease, and death for millions more people for more than a century. If we are going to disarm once and for all, it is critical that we send a message now to our state and federal governments. Adopting this resolution will signify that we support the fight to abolish nuclear weapons and finally end their inhumane treatment. In solidarity, David Corf. I'd like to add lastly that there are two state bills right now in committee that would investigate the implications of severing all ties with the industry. So that's something that might happen at the state level. It could be huge, so everybody knows. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Miranda Gru. I recently moved to East Hampton, and it's wonderful to be here before you. I want to also speak in favor of aligning East Hampton with the Nuclear Ban Treaty. I think it's terrifying to imagine that my generation and all people on this earth face two existential threats, three, as Ben was saying, of climate change and then nuclear weapons. And while nuclear weapons seem a bit more abstract in this time, it is something that everyone has to think about. You know, is their future going to be possible? You know, should folks be, you know, raising families with these existential threats? And I think, as someone else here said, I think that's a great point. Locally, we can create more change where state and federal leadership is lacking. I know North Hampton is the first city in the entire country to align with this treaty, and I would love to see East Hampton align with it as well and follow in that leadership and send a message to our state and our federal government that we refuse to live with these existential threats to our communities and communities around the world. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Britton. I live on Ridgwood Terrace in East Hampton. I'm here to speak in support of the Roe Act resolution that is going to be introduced tonight by City Councilor Peg Coniff. I have a whole thing prepared, but I think I might wait for the vote, but I just want to say that my support for abortion access comes from my deep-seated belief that all people should have access to the health care that they require, because abortion is health care. And it also comes from the work that I do as an intake volunteer for the Abortion Rights Fund of Western Massachusetts. We provide funding for people who need abortions in the country, but specifically in Western Massachusetts, and I'm here to say, I talk to people all the time who can't afford their abortion, who have to hide their abortion from their parents, who have to leave the state to receive abortion care after 24 weeks, even after receiving a lethal fetal diagnosis from their doctor. So I talk to people all the time who are going through things that can be remedied by passing the Roe Act in Massachusetts, and I will speak more to that with anyone who wants to, and I just urge you to support the resolution. Thank you.
Counselor McCoy and members of the East Hampton City Council, thank you for this opportunity to testify today in support of the Roe Act. My name is Carrie Baker, and I'm the president of the Abortion Rights Fund of Western Massachusetts, which is what Laura was just referring to. We give financial support to people who do not have money to cover the cost of abortion care. Restrictions on abortion like Massachusetts parental consent law and its ban on abortion after 24 weeks in cases of fatal fetal anomalies delay access to abortion care and increase the cost. These delays can make abortion financially inaccessible for people who might already be struggling the most, like young people. The Roe Act would eliminate the onerous judicial bypass process that teenagers must navigate to access safe, legal abortion. A study published last April in Obstetrics and Gynecology, which I'll provide to you, led by investigators from Brigham and Women's Hospital, reported that the judicial bypass process in Massachusetts causes significant delays in abortion access. These delays and the resulting increase in costs cause young people undue stress, anxiety, and fear. No other pregnancy-related health care requires parental consent. Research shows that parental consent laws do not significantly increase the likelihood that a young person will consult their parent about their abortion decision. According to the study I just mentioned, 77% of minors in the state of Massachusetts talk with their parents about their abortion decision. When minors use judicial bypass, it's often because their parents are not available, they're medically incapacitated, in jail, or otherwise unavailable. In fact, the rate of Massachusetts youth consulting their parents about their abortion decision is very similar to rates in states without laws that have parental consent requirements. Eliminating the parental consent and bypass requirements can increase the likelihood that a young person will receive the care they need in a timelier, safer manner with significantly less stress and fear. Therefore, we support the elimination of parental consent for minors to access abortion care. States across the country are banning safe, legal abortion and forcing their residents to cross state lines or go without care. The Roe Act would ensure that in Massachusetts, safe, legal abortion is accessible to all people. Please vote in favor of the Roe Act resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have this study and a couple handouts about the act and what it does for you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Morgan. I live in Amherst, and I was one of the people who was involved in the Amherst Resolution to support the Roe Act, which, as you may know, passed the town council unanimously this summer. So I just wanted to thank you for considering this act and to speak in support of our local state legislators from Western Massachusetts who are supporting this at the state level. I think passing it at the town level is really the most important thing that we can do to try and show them that we're with them in what they're doing in Boston. I got a real education when I started looking into this this summer. I'd heard about the Roe Act, but I didn't know very much about the Massachusetts laws. I knew that our state was, has a state constitution that guarantees access to abortion, but I didn't know that we had these restrictive measures on the books in Massachusetts. As Carrie has already explained, someone who needs to terminate a pregnancy for serious medical reasons, such as a diagnosis that the fetus is not going to survive, has to travel outside of the state if the diagnosis is made after 24 weeks of pregnancy. We have a world-class medical facilities in our state, and yet people would have to travel elsewhere to get this kind of care. Nor did I realize that minors in the state of Massachusetts, unlike those in Connecticut, Maine, New York, or Vermont, have to get parental permission to get an abortion. If not, they have to find the courage to approach a judge for permission, which leads to delays in getting care. This implies that such teens are mature enough to have a baby, but not to decide their own reproductive futures. Massachusetts also has a mandatory 24-hour waiting period on the books, although that's not currently enforced. It could be enforced if people opted to. That burdensome law creates extra expenses and stress, especially for youth, people of color, and low-income people. And to make matters worse, Massachusetts law defines abortion as "the knowing destruction of the life of an unborn child," language that is inflammatory and medically inaccurate. And what the Roe Act proposes to do is to change those provisions in the law, and so I would encourage you to step up and show that your town supports our state legislators as they're working in Boston to do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gwen Morrissey. I'm an East Hampton resident on Mayor Street, and I thought for a little while about why East Hampton should bother with a pro-Roe resolution. I was like, oh, right, politics is local. So here I am. Humans in the society that we've created see and experience too much misery already. And until birth control is 100% accessible, understood, used, and used 100% correctly, there will be abortion. And until rape doesn't exist, there will be abortion, and until everyone can count on there always being enough money and food for their family, there will be abortion. And as long as women have the faintest hope they might avoid some misery of their own or prevent it for another human, and as long as women maintain that they should get to decide what their own future looks like, there will be abortion. No one makes that decision lightly. It's a misery in and of itself. But it should be accessible and easily so, safe, rare, legal. And East Hampton can help remind our state representatives that that's what we expect and deserve. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Shaw. I live on Water Street in East Hampton, and I'm here to encourage you to support the resolution in favor of the Roe Act on the state level. When I was 18, I had an abortion. I was an undergraduate at Hampshire College, and I did everything I was supposed to have done. There was a condom involved, it broke, I had access to good health insurance, I was able to access an abortion, and it allowed me to have the life that I have now. I am convinced that I probably wouldn't have finished college if I had been required to have a child instead of an abortion, and it's a right that I feel that everyone should have regardless of their station in life, regardless of their age critically. I agree with what one of the earlier speakers said, that local government now has more importance than ever before, and that local resolutions such as this will provide necessary support for statewide action. The reason for statewide action, of course, is that there is, you know, a more present risk than, you know, any of us can remember in recent decades, that federal protections for abortion rights in the U.S. may be overturned, and that it will be down to the states to allow, to create an environment where it is possible for women to have access to the reproductive health care that they need. It will probably be parental consent that will be the most divisive issue on this particular act, and many in the area, many who work for reproductive justice really see this as an issue of increasing access and decreasing days for the delays in health care, for the reasons that the other speakers said. Parental consent laws, unfortunately, perhaps as, you know, they were hoped to do, perhaps not, unfortunately do not have the effect of improving communication between young people and their parents, but instead really their dominant effect is just to delay women's access to reproductive health care. So thank you for listening to the speakers, and please consider this resolution.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Miriam Ansara, 359 Main Street, Unit 2A. So I don't want to speak about the Roe resolution, though I am supportive of it, as I'm old enough to remember when we had no control over our employment, our lives, our profession, let alone our bodies. And that's essentially what the fight is about. What I want to say is how proud and pleased I am that our city is considering the resolution on the ban of, to support the U.N. Ban on Nuclear Weapons. I am especially pleased because over and over again in the last year, we've seen how our small city has a really big heart, and we are more and more creating a sense of justice and good in the work that the council is doing and the rest of us in the city are doing, and I really appreciate that. We have been a city, as a city part of the mayor's for peace, for a long time. We now are the proud host of the annual commemoration of the bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki. And now Counselor Rist has introduced this resolution. And why is this resolution important? It's important because if enough cities and towns, small and large, can push the state to pass resolutions like this, then, and if enough states can do it, then the mightiest nuclear armed power on earth can be forced to listen and can be forced to abandon the use of nuclear weapons. And it's one more step saving ourselves from the annihilation that may well be facing us. It's not our only challenge, but it sure is a big one. And also, if nuclear bombs and landmines, but it was that kind of work by small bodies like this, and increasing the numbers of people that banned landmines around the world. So thank you very, very much, and I know that I can count on everybody's vote here, and that's very, very heartwarming.
Thank you.
No pressure.
Did you ask if there's anybody else? I think there's someone else who wanted to speak. Sure. Anyone else would like to address the council on any topics that aren't on public hearing?
Hi there. I'm Mike Dunphy from 57 Florence Road. Had, we had a little neighborhood meeting on Sunday, and a couple of council members were there, which was great, appreciate that, and wanted to bring up a couple of, a public safety issue, we think, and also a quality of life issue, just to bring to your attention. As far as public safety goes, we feel like the speed throughout the city has been, you know, speed limits aren't always paid as close attention to as people would like. That's a problem in every city, and certainly it's a problem here. It's a problem on every street, we know, but Florence Road's a real pass-through, especially for people who are from out of town, who may not treat the neighborhoods with the same respect as the people who are from town. And there's been a lot of accidents lately, a pretty tough one a couple Tuesdays ago. It's pretty dangerous to cross the road, and to the point where the postal service has asked people to move their mailboxes across the street so that their people don't have to cross the road to deliver packages. So, you know, if their people shouldn't be crossing the road, what's that say about the people who live there? So when the police have been making a presence felt lately, and that's been much appreciated, and at times we've had the sign that shows the speed at which the car's traveling as compared to the regular speed limit, that's been very helpful. You can really notice the difference when it's there, but when it's not there, we go right back to where we were, which is dangerous. And so with a lot of kids, a lot of animals, a lot of teenagers pulling out of driveways, we're hoping that, you know, it can be brought to the Public Safety Committee or someone like that to talk about possible solutions. And the second that came up in our meeting was a quality of life issue, which was the jake brakes on the trucks. It happens to be a hill on our street, so they use those a lot, slowing down on the hills, and it's pretty loud. Noticed that a lot of the neighboring communities have bans on those, and I'm just curious if East Hampton would consider something like that. They're really not necessary if you're not on the highway, for the most part, and it's a convenience for the truckers, but it's an inconvenience for the neighborhood. And so just wanted to see if you would consider something like that.
Great. Thank you so much for your comments. I'll have Counselor Gomez contacted you, that he's the chair of public safety, and the two of you can maybe work together and come up with some specific language for things to look at.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for your participation. Try to make this the last one, because we have to, we're 15 minutes late. Oh, no, please, go ahead on our public hearings, but go ahead.
So I'm Susan Hagan with the Census Bureau, and so we're in preparation for the 2020 census. So I wanted to make sure that East Hampton was aware that I am the person who's in charge of the messaging, and so wanted to make sure that you had my name, and just to give a shout-out for preparation, getting all the constituents and all the people of East Hampton ready, and knowing why it's so important to fill out their 2020 census. It's coming in March, and this time, after so many hundreds of years, we've decided, I guess, to do it all online.
If you could just stand behind.
Oh, sorry, to do it online, and there's options. Self-response will be mail-in, telephone, or online. And so we're really trying to work with agencies within the city who are the trusted voices for people who might not trust the government or might decide that it's not important. So that's really what we're working with, is partnering with people who are the trusted voices of the community, and they were, they're the ones that give the official, this is important, and please fill it out, and if you need any help, you know, we can get you some help, and to figure out, especially for seniors and any hard-to-count populations that you might have.
Do you have an email or website for anyone who's listening?
Oh, yes, I do.
If you just want to read it off, that way.
Oh, so the census.gov is the website, and then we also are recruiting, and so what the census is doing is we're recruiting now, all the way through August of 2020, for jobs, for enumerators. Address canvassing is almost finished now, but the enumerator jobs will be coming up. And so our websites are all over. It's usually censusjobs, or 2020censusjobs.gov, and those are positions $18 an hour, and it's flexible, weekends, evenings, that's in order to get the census done. And then the other informational link would be 2020census.gov, and that's where more and more information is. And an enumerator is the person who, so you'll get, will all be invited to participate in the decennial through the mail, will get a little postcard, and so what will, so what you do is you decide if you want to self-respond by mail, by telephone, or online, and if you don't, the enumerator starts knocking at your door, so that you'll get up to five or six visits if you don't fill out the form. So you want to fill it out so you don't have those enumerators come, but that's what an enumerator does. So anybody who, there's a housing, everybody has been, you know, we've looked at the map, and we've decided which are the housing units in East Hampton, and then each housing unit represents something that needs to be closed out at the end of the census. So they'll come knocking at your door. That's what an enumerator does.
Thank you very much for the, certainly anyone who would like to speak to you privately afterwards, it would be great to get this information.
Okay.
Thanks for that introduction.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna, I can come back to public speak time, but we do have to move on, because we're, by time, we're supposed to have public hearings at a certain time. So I'm gonna have to move on, but again, if there are people still here who, the Roe v Wade, the Roe resolution, we'll have plenty of time for public speak again. We are voting tonight on the nuclear resolution and the mistreatment of migrant children resolution tonight, but we'll move at this point. So I want you to take the motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? All in favor? Passes. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three public hearings tonight, and just to give an update, two of them, we are going to continue once more. So, but I do want to give anybody that's interested in commenting an opportunity. So, the first one that we are going to be continuing, and I'll give a little update as well, is the cannabis equity applicants. We have recently received some guidance from the Campus Control Commission that we are going to be discussing at the committee level, and I'm hoping that that is going to shed a little bit of light into the darker areas of this that we weren't quite sure about. And so, that is something that we are continuing to look at, and I feel confident that we should be able to have the vote on that on October 2nd. And I'd be happy to allow -- Counselors, Eric, do you have anything to add on that one?
I mean, the only thing I could say -- I was gonna say is I'm happy to read that. Do you want me to read that memo, or would that be helpful, or?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, I know, I think you summarized it well. I think we received some really exceptional guidance, as usual, from our city solicitor. There's some budget constraints, which I completely understand, and we had to kind of cut it off there, but I think the framework they gave us was exceptional, and I've been really thankful for the guidance that the CCC has given us to clarify some of the questions around the groups that we're trying to open up equity to. I think that's all.
Yep. Counselor Rist has a question.
Counselor Rist. I just ask then, just for transparency's sake, so that the counselors know the evolution of your debate on this, that all correspondence from the city attorney to you be provided to all the counselors, so we could catch up on how this evolved and where it's at right now.
That makes sense.
And also with the wage theft as well.
Okay. And so, and I'd be happy to open it up to anybody from the public if they'd like to comment on it, even though we're not voting on it tonight, if anybody would like to make a comment on cannabis equity. Seeing none, I'd be -- like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment cannabis equity application applicants to October 2nd at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
Okay. A motion, a second, to continue the public hearings on the cannabis equity ordinance to October 2nd. Additional questions or comments? Although, Counselor Rist -- I mean, is there?
Just thank you, everyone, for your patience. We didn't expect to hit some of the bumps that we did. I appreciate -- we want to do it right, so thank you for your patience on this.
The comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Passes.
One abstention? Do I hear? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. And so, the next one, again, this is one where we are continuing to get input from the city solicitor, from the carpenters' union, who was one of the proponents of this, and we, again, are going to be discussing this at the subcommittee level at our next meeting. And I think, Counselors, Eric, do you have anything else you want to add on that?
Just that, I think we're very close to some revised language. I think that the initial piece of legislation we have, while very robust, ran up, I think, as I detailed last time, against some charter issues in regards to separation of power between the legislator and the executive, and I think we need to make sure that this is completely -- the language we adopt is completely within the realm of the executive -- of the legislature, the legislature. And I really appreciate the work, again, that our solicitor, the mayor, and the carpenters' union, as well as the ordinance subcommittee, has done on this. Thank you again for your patience. We're very close, and I'll be presenting it at our ordinance meeting, which is next week, so we should have something in time for -- so, thank you.
And if anybody from the public would like to make a comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for the ordinance amendment wage theft ordinance for October 2nd at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
Motion, a second, to continue the public hearing on the wage theft ordinance to October 2nd. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay. And finally, what we have is an amendment to our city ordinances that was, I believe it was recommended by our city solicitor, as the role of the DPW has evolved, getting an ordinance that would be more in line with the current duties of the DPW and what their -- the tasks that they're performing. And so, this is an ordinance that would change the language in our ordinances, that would give the power to the city to have the DPW do work outside of the original scope, such as like maintenance on buildings and things of that nature. And so, and since you are the person who put it forward, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to?
Sure. I think where this all came about was, as is to be expected, when there's a new administration, there are changes in responsibility, and it was in the charter that just said, "The Department of Public Works is allowed to have different responsibilities," but I believe it said in the ordinance, in the charter, we don't have it in front of us, that it's by ordinance. And so, just as a housekeeping -- it's actually weird that it -- it's a double entendre there. We've assigned kind of building maintenance to the Department of Public Works, but to be in compliance, maybe is a better word, is a better word, we decided to change the wording to allow, to add this, the public, the building maintenance as a current responsibility, as well as leaving the room for additional responsibility to be added by administrative code in case the mayor wishes to add additional responsibilities to that department. So, that was the -- do you hear behind it?
Thank you. Any counselors have any questions?
I think this is excellent, because I believe that when we have departments that have ambiguity with regard to their responsibilities, and we have a new mayor, mayor asks who's responsible for building operations, and the DPW says, "Well, we haven't been doing it," or "We have been doing it." This cleans it up, and we should be doing that a lot. I also feel that the language that the attorney wanted for the administrative code is fine, because that matches the charter. It also, if the mayor should choose to add something through administrative code, and she could also introduce an ordinance in the future, we still have the right to analyze that and vote yes or no on those, so it doesn't matter whether it's code or ordinance. But I'm very, very happy that this is being done. This is a good way to clean up responsibilities.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Would like to address this ordinance? Okay. I think it's Counselor.
Okay. So, I would like to make a motion to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Division 6, Board of Public Works, by adding new Section 2-66, defining the Department of Public Works as follows. "There shall be a Department of Public Works responsible for the performance of all public works-related activities of the city. The Department of Public Works shall assume all the duties and responsibilities related to public works activities and building operations, including the maintenance and repair of city buildings and property. Additional powers, duties, and responsibilities with respect to public works-related functions made from time to time be provided by administrative code in accordance with Home Rule Charter, Article 6, Section 6-1B."
Second. A motion, a second, to approve the previously read ordinance relating to the Board of Public Works. Additional questions or comments on this? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
Let us affirm.
I entertain a motion.
The public hearings be closed.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. Since we finished the public hearings, let me circle back. Is there anyone here who would like to finish up with some public speak time for any of those topics that they felt they didn't get an opportunity to speak to? Okay.
Laurel Gardner, 13 Plain Street. Dan Rist, I just want to tell you, I'm very pleased that you're going to bring this up for a vote tonight. When a federal government shows signs of moral bankruptcy, that's when we, the people, have to take our stand. And so, I thank you all for thinking about this topic and for voting, hopefully, on what, to me, is both common sense and decency. Thank you.
We talked about the nuclear resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a number of them out there.
This is the only one you were doing tonight. I didn't realize that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? I just want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak, am I? Okay. So, we'll move on to the rest of the meeting. I believe we are on communications from boards committees. Anything, any counsel -- I saw Counselor Pete first.
Sure. I am sort of excited to announce this. I received a message from our state rep, Dan Carey, today, stating that the State House has voted to approve our home rule petition for the amendment to our charter. So, I have not heard yet. I don't believe that the governor signed it today, but that's the only thing that remains, is the governor's signature. My understanding is it would be somewhat unprecedented for a governor to veto a home rule petition in a Commonwealth, so I'm feeling really great about that. And yes, I just want to go on the record and thank our delegation to Beacon Hill for all the hard work they put into this. It took a long time, and we -- I think I can speak for the council, and I say, "We really, really appreciate the work they put in."
Especially Dan Carey.
Especially Dan Carey. Counselors, Eric.
I'm actually glad you went first, because I was hoping you were gonna announce that, and I wanted to recognize the hard work that was done by the Charter Review Committee, our solicitor. I especially want to thank you, Counselor Pete, because I know that this, one of the items, ranked choice voting, is especially near and dear to you, and you've been a real champion of that, both on the municipal level and the state level. Really, thank you so much for bringing this, not quite home, but at least, you know, you're in the red zone.
September voters, yes.
Yes, it is, or will be.
Or will be.
So, and then, I just wanted to comment really quickly. Mr. Dunphy had got up before. Counselor Kuzinski and I did attend a meeting with some residents from Florence Road to talk about mostly speeding issues. Obviously, as a resident there, it's something that's near and dear to me. I would echo the sentiments, and I, you know, I know that Counselor Gomez has spoken about this, that we kind of do have somewhat of an epidemic of speeding in the city as we've become a much more popular destination, and we've seen more economic development. With that comes some of these other growing pains. So, you know, obviously, I support better speed mitigation all over the city. Certainly, in my own hood, I do as well, so it's something I'll be certainly talking to my colleagues about a little bit, in terms of the local and the general, so, yes.
Okay. Any other reports? Counselor Derby?
I just wanted to state, one of the things in my precinct that has been an ongoing issue has been, I'd say, probably one of the most dangerous intersections in East Hampton, which is the intersection of South Street and Main Street. And recently, there's been multiple car accidents, and I just want to acknowledge that, acknowledge the fact that the Public Safety Committee had that particular issue in our committee. We had looked at many different ways to try to mitigate the problems at that intersection, and because of the trickiness of that intersection, a lot of those things could not come to fruition as it's part of the state highway there. But I do want to acknowledge that, you know, Counselor Rist and the mayor are looking at potentially a new mitigation piece for that, and I just wanted to say how happy I am about that.
Counselor Rist?
Well, okay. I was going to ask to thank the mayor. I presented a request to the mayor for free cash to provide -- we cannot do anything on Main Street. The DOT, I guess, wants more accidents to happen before they do something, which is a little ridiculous. But we can do something on South Street. They belong to the city. So, I've asked the mayor to provide two flashing LED stop signs, which will improve the likelihood that someone who's asleep at the wheel forgets to stop. Someone ran a stop sign this past week, and my granddaughter's friend was in the car, and I got a call. These things happen, sometimes family-wise. But this, I want to thank the mayor for providing the funding. She's looking into it. She's pretty -- she's supportive of it. It's not a lot of money. It's like $3,500 plus installation for the two signs. But if you know on Lawville Road and West Street, there's these stop signs, they do give a secondary indication to asleep drivers that, "Hey, this is a stop sign that you need to stop at." And it may not prevent every accident, but if it prevents one, it's worth the money. So, I'm very thankful to the mayor. She -- I made a formal request for free cash, and I think it's gonna happen, and I wanted to -- Salem already knew about it, and I wanted to surprise him.
Can't sneak it by me.
We're getting to run.
But we are gonna try something. We're gonna do something.
Yeah.
And I still want us to keep looking at pressuring the Department of Transportation for real stoplight there, because we're still gonna have accidents, even with those.
Okay. Any other? Counselor Kuzinski?
I wanted to thank Counselor Rist for that move with South Street. It's one of the worst intersections in the city. I think we all agree that, with that. I think that anything we can do there is greatly appreciated, so thank you for that effort. Also, I wanted to comment about speed throughout the entire city, and ask all my fellow citizens to look at themselves when they drive. We're the ones who speed when we're on the road. Give it an extra thought every time you do drive. Do your very best to stay. Keep your foot from going onto that pedal too hard. It's very easy to do, and that's why we, you know, there are tickets, people get them, it happens. But we have to make an extra conscious thought to socially live within those restrictions as best we can. And I think that's a good thing for us to be thinking about every time we get behind the wheel. As part of this, I will be recommending that we purchase some additional signs that have a message after the blinking sign that says, "Okay, this is the speed you're going at," and when the driver slows down, it says in green, "Thank you." It helps to remind us at that moment and in other moments where there aren't "thank you" signs, to be conscious of this effort. We, Counselor Zare, and I spent quite a bit of time with the constituents, and I think we'll be meeting with other constituents in the city and have some additional ideas to help this city become better and a safer place to be.
Sure. Thank you.
Quickly.
Because I mean, this is becoming, this is walking a fine line between a deliberation about public safety, which, again, I want to be careful of the agenda, because...
I just wanted to give kudos to my daughter, Megan, who's active in the city. It was her idea for the flashing stop sign, and she deserves credit.
There you go. That's okay.
Yay, Megan.
So, move on. So, as far as, from the Vice President, President Communications, we did have a request for a naming commission, committee for Section 3 of the walkway in the park, in the baseball fields. That committee was put together by two names from the mayor and two from the city council president. The mayor appointments are Deb Luznia and Dave Mader. City council president appointments are Counselor Gomez, Jason Terrell, and Joe DeShane. So, that will be the committee for the naming of the Section 3 walkway. John Mason from Parks and Rec will be in touch as far as to organize the first meeting and get everyone going, but again, thank you for your participation in that. Counselor, kind of.
Will those go through the process for appointments, or is that just an act?
This is just an act of an ad hoc committee formation.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Communications.
Somebody. That's a mistake, calls.
Good evening, everyone. Somewhat of a long list tonight, but mostly good news. Okay. So, a couple of important dates coming up. This Saturday, noon to 3, East Hampton Futures Project is presenting the sum of the last two public forums. I would encourage members of the city council and members of the public to attend. It's very interactive. It's hard to describe what goes on or how we've really structured this, this visioning project. I promise you, it is unlike any other visioning project or exercise you've ever been in. Our arts coordinator, Pascolina, has done an amazing job really teasing out of everyone their true vision for East Hampton for arts and culture, and that'll go into our master plan and update that chapter after your review. We are hoping to use this model to continue on different topics to vision out for the city. And again, that is noon to 3 at September 21. It's on the first floor of Eastworks across from East Hampton Media. Easthamptonfutures.org is the website that kind of walks you through that. If you cannot attend on Saturday, you can take a survey at that website to kind of give your vision of East Hampton. I would, this, the last thing I would say about just the organization, this is very similar to the graphic transcription and graphic organizing exercise we did with the Civics Academy earlier in the year, and clearly, I'm excited about it. This is cutting-edge. I mean, I don't... I mean, I don't know. The only other city I know that's really done this or two, St. Louis and a little bit, St. Paul, Minnesota, for visioning. I mean, a lot of people do this, but, so, we're right there. Okay, 5:00 PM, October 2nd. We are dedicating our POW MIA table. It's a public event. If you're not familiar with the POW/MIA table, right now, there's a big campaign by the American Legions and Veterans of Foreign Wars Post putting up a table with very specific things around it to remind us all that we should never forget those who served our country and no one is ever left behind. It's a very moving pledge and short ceremony. It was installed, the table was installed in City Hall beside the City Clerk's office today for the dedication on October 2nd. And there will be one installed in the Public Safety Complex in the next month or so. And I thank the American Legion Post 224 for putting that together and approaching us to have that. Very, very emotional and well-deserved and we need to remember that. Lindsey Mailer, who is the municipal clerk working out of my office, was awarded the first-ever Tim Brennan Leadership Fund Scholarship to attend the Leadership Pioneer Valley Program. It covers the full tuition of $3,500 and comes at no expense to the city. Between 30 and 40, folks are chosen after, out of many applicants, to go through a nine-month leadership program. The participants each need to pick a topic or a focus that relates to the valley. And Lindsey has chosen affordable housing. Just for, I emailed this out to the council as well as the Agenda's email, a clarification from our city attorney around provisions of the city charter and state law that govern the city council's voting procedures, specifically as they impact the number of councilors required to be present to take an action in general and the number of councillor votes required to take a given action when the council has a sufficient quorum. One hard copy for the clerk and it's all in your inbox as well for just general information and review.
I'm concerned why the charter specifically states that we must have five votes to pass anything regardless of quorum, majority.
I...
What is that, is that, he's suggesting something differently?
He's clarifying. There was a question, an ongoing question about, is quorum of present members, is quorum of all the members of the body and also on different types of votes, whether it was appropriation or not.
You're talking about non-council committees? Because we had that debated charter law.
No, we're talking about City Council.
I think, I believe when I looked at it, it's all in compliance of what we do, but I think it...
It is. But there were just questions.
Not changing.
No, clarifying.
I got a little nervous.
And checking against state law, because there was a back and forth question around, you know, is there state law that would affect what we have and not?
First I'm hearing, okay.
Counselor Zerbe?
Oh, it's just, Mayor, did you say this was emailed?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
When, I didn't get the emails.
I didn't get it either.
Oh, when we get Agenda, when I emailed to Agenda, it doesn't go to the council?
You mean, it might, it should be in our packet is what you're saying?
No. I just did it today.
Yeah. I think she emailed to Agenda, which I think that goes to Barb.
That'll go to Barb and it'll get on our packet.
And I copied Joe.
Yeah.
I'll forward it to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
My apologies. So many emails. Just an update on a couple of grants. I hope you saw in the news and the press and thank you for those who attended, just the safer grants to our fire department desperately needed the equipment as well as the grant. There are some questions about the grant for actually staff and, you know, that this will just lead for us to bring in four firefighters and then have to lay them off. I would say clearly that that will happen without prudent and mindful fiscal management. And I look to this council to assist me in that management. We'll have some tough choices to make regardless, but this is a great way through this grant to get some money upfront in two years to set the tone of having a trained-up, well-staffed fire department when the city will not be able to fund what any department wants or needs, but certainly fire and the expense to bring on a public safety person, training and equipment and whatnot. And salary, it's steep, so, I just wanted to point anything. Our housing choice capital asset grant around Valley Bike Share, just an update, our new East Hampton bikes have arrived. And we, the city got a part of the grant, 36 bikes to put into the system. We get the brand-new ones. Six are on the streets as of now. Six will stay in the warehouse up in Florence, Mass. for repair and replacement. The cost of each bike is $3,200, so we're talking about a bunch of money. The kiosk at City Hall is now fixed and can take credit cards. And the kiosk to pay for the bikes at Millside is awaiting the repair. When they were shipped, some of the equipment was broken. And just a reminder that we have four locations where you can get bikes, Old Town Hall, City Hall, Millside Park, and Union Street. All of those bikes, you can use the app or if you get a little fob, you can join for like the year. The bikes will be on our streets until about November 1st and then they go into storage until the springtime. And let me just, the last piece absent, questions are around resolutions in general. And I've had a couple of conversations with members of the council and as well as larger communities, the feeling on resolutions and resolutions that concern issues outside of the immediate jurisdiction of municipalities. I would say that, one, I appreciate the conversation. And I would also agree that not every issue that we possibly could write a resolution for, whether this body or myself, rises to a level of resolution or a strong statement made by a municipality. But I appreciate and would implore this legislative body to pay good attention to our residents' voices and to determine what they value and what they want to see reflected in the overall values of the legislative bodies. And I pledge to do the same from the executive. I think it's important to put into public record the voice of every day's person's wishes for their country, quality of life, and their values. It's what makes up who we are. Like-voices across the state and the nation are registered formally during this process for their state and federal electeds to hear and hopefully act upon in a way the residents of our country would like to see. That said, with the proposal before you around the nuclear ban, as brought up before, East Hampton is one of 7,789 cities that are a part of the Mayors for Peace Program. And it was established in 1986 out of the devastation of the nuclear bonds dropped in Hiroshima and Nagasaki. No different than water or air, nuclear fallout knows no geographic boundaries. And we must all take note of that on the very bottom, beginning levels of government to the very top of our democracy. I see this particular resolution as a voice of a small city affirming their intention to live peacefully and in good health to national and international bodies and all else who are concerned. I would urge the serious consideration by the council to adopt this resolution and know that I will pledge to stay in the group Mayors for Peace as we have long been members. On the ROW Act, East Hampton clearly values a healthy community that has equitable access to health care. That said, the fact that we may be parsing the values or who does or does not have access to that health care based on biological sex or chosen orientation is somewhat disappointing and concerning that we even have to have the conversation. Regardless of how you are seen within your community, whether in a faith community or in a political community, the unequivocal right to health care regardless of what that health care service is should stand alone and remain with one person and one person only, the individual who seeks it, whether they be male or female or gender fluid or trans, it doesn't matter. I have signed on to the letter in support of the state legislations with many other mayors on the ROW Act. The access to reproductive health care and dare I say, in public, the word abortion is crucial to our public healthy, our public health, our economics of our city, state, and nation, as well as emotional burden that may be carried by some members of our community and not of others because they lack the choice or even the option to safely voice the choice they would like. I urge this council very strongly to support this resolution and pass it. I'm done.
Mary, a good point has made me think, I mean, obviously, we're the legislative branch, you're the executive branch. These were submitted to the legislative branch, which we're responding to. What, as the executive branch, what is your response? Do you do similar resolutions? Are you going to support it by different letters or how do you see that?
I can certainly put in a written statement for what becomes, I'm happy to do that to the legislative branch. Right now, we are, in my office, developing a set of criteria for resolutions, proclamations, and certificates of appreciation to be a little more clear about what each one is and basic operational of how many days we need in advance to do it, but also just the topics and whatnot. I think there's also some confusion about people will request a resolution from my office when they're really looking to do something with the legislative bodies to kind of hone the policy and philosophy around our ordinances.
Counselor Rist?
The charter does require, as I recall, the executive to approve any resolution that we pass.
Yes. Once that is put forward.
Yes.
Yep.
And you could veto it, too. I'm just saying you have authority over the resolutions and I don't think there's any restriction if you wanted to introduce one yourself, of course.
No, I don't. I just, you know, up to date the legislative resolution work done by the council.
Okay. Counselor Taniff?
So, thank you for putting some guidelines around resolutions. I, too, am thinking about putting something forth in this body where we have an understanding of what does qualify as a resolution?
Yep.
And what is our elected duty to the community for what we have been elected to do. And I think that it is time for this body to put some definition around those kinds of things, too. So, thank you for taking the lead on that and we'll be looking to see how that fleshes out and then doing our own as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's, you know, again, I, as mayor and as an individual, don't really take issue with the work we've done with resolutions that are put forward. I do, in the back of my head, get a little prickle around resolutions passed by either executive or legislative bodies that don't have a full public vetting. We have an avenue to just kind of stand up and I'm not saying we're pontificating. I certainly will take my part of pontification. But, and having true comment and the language getting onto the agenda and consideration, I think, is important. And at this time in our history, a good time to put definition around it.
Sure, questions, comments from the mayor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving on to Stanley Committees. Van Nuys, Counsel Rist?
Yes, we will be meeting on the 25th at 5:00 PM to, we weren't unable to meet, but we haven't set a public hearing for the $18,000 to pay additional costs for the workers' compensation. That meeting will be on the 25th at 5:00 PM in room one. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for our next meeting for the $18,000 to pay additional costs for workers' compensation.
Second? Yeah, motion, a second, to set a public hearing on October 2nd for the $18,000 for workers' compensation. Short questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
That concludes, Mr. President.
Okay. Public safety, Counsel Gomez.
In the report, at this time, Mr. President.
Okay. Appointments, Counsel Taniff?
We had, we met this evening, we had one mayoral appointment, Austin Sanders to the Board of Public Works with the term expiration 12/31/2020. We approved it at the Subcommittee Level 3-0. I just want to give a little bit of background on Mr. Sanders before we vote. He is a two-year resident of East Hampton. He moved here from Hadley to work and he's very fond of the mills. He lives very close to Ferry Street and is looking forward to that development taking off. He is a, he was referred here by Jeff Bag. They worked together in Amerest and so that he has a urban planning, a master's in urban planning, so he has some background there. His wife is going to UMass for her PhD. He has, the reason he is on this nomination is because he asked Jeff how he can serve in East Hampton, which I love the way he phrased that. And so, this was something that he feels he is more than qualified to do. He's worked in Americor at a national, at the national level, so he's very interested in participating in the Board of Public Works. And one last thing, wait for it, he has a dog. And that dog is a Spinone Italiano, two years old, by the name of Annie. Most important detail of the night. So, I will take a motion to approve Austin Sanders to the Board of Public Works with the term expiration 12/31/2020.
Second? Okay, we have motion, a second, to approve Austin Sanders to Board of Public Works, expiration 12/31/2020. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
We have two nominations, mayoral nominations for the Appointments Subcommittee. One, Deborah August, Conservation Commission, 12/31/2021. And Cassie Akoff for the EDIC with an expiration of 12/31/2021. I will put that in the form of a motion to move that to the Subcommittee, the Appointments Subcommittee.
Motion, a second, to move to Subcommittee that previously read to mayoral appointments for further consideration? Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And we set our next meeting for October 2nd at 5:30. Thus concludes.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting will be on a different day than it normally is. Normally, it's Tuesday. Next week, we're going to be meeting Thursday instead. So, Thursday, September 26th, 5:15 downstairs. We're going to continue to look at the cannabis equity applications, the wage theft ordinance, and the other things that we do have on our agenda. At this time, I would like to set a public hearing for our bike, the review of the bike rules. And I would do that in the form of a motion for October 2nd at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second?
Okay, a motion, a second, to set a public hearing, the Chapter 3 Amendment for Bicycles, October 2nd. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And I am going to ask to remove one of our items, the request to review mobile multi-passenger vehicle bike. I'd like to remove that without prejudice in the form of a motion.
Okay, a motion, a second, remove without prejudice, the request to review the multi, mobile multi-passenger vehicle. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And that concludes.
Okay, thank you. Property, Counsel Kuzinski?
Just would like to remind the public that we do anticipate hearing from the city planner and from the consultant who was hired to look at where a dog park might be sited in the city. There were several different locations and I, we kind of anticipating that sometime in October, so keep that on the horizon. And we will hear their report. It is not a formal vote. It is not before the council, as a full council, but it is in process. This concludes.
Okay, thank you. Rules of Government Relations, Counsel Pete?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple things to go through. I'll start with a kind of short one. So, since the mayor and a few other people brought it up, I just want to say, we did meet this last Friday and we discussed two resolutions plus the telecom, the municipal light plant thing. And I'm ready to move forward on all three of those. We did, in the process, discuss resolutions and I think the general feeling, you guys can correct me if I misrepresent this, is that while we support each of these resolutions, we might... we might want to, within rules, have a broader conversation about resolutions, when they're appropriate, what are the, like, are the appropriate times to use them, what are maybe not the appropriate times to use them. I don't really have any strong opinions about that right now, but it is a thing that's come up enough that I would anticipate some sort of open conversation about that going forward.
Counselors?
Yeah, one of the things that I thought might be a filter is resolutions that support legislative action at the state level. The Roe Resolution does that, the nuclear resolution supports two legislative acts that are being considered, which deal with the consequences of divestment. These resolutions of this type suggest that we are giving an opinion, with the mayor's support, on where we want our legislators that represent us to act for our city.
Yeah.
That, to me, is a good filter.
Right.
Legislative resolutions that deal with the opinion of the council on national events, we may need to look at how we want to proceed on those, although I agree with the mayor. A lot of people now are waking up to the fact that local government has the ability to be a voice for them, and I don't know how I would feel about stifling that too much.
Yeah.
But I think resolutions like the migrant resolution tonight, I don't think that speaks to any legislative act, but it's an important subject, so I don't know where we go with that.
Yeah.
But I do feel that any resolution that deals with state action, and we're giving opinion to our state legislators, ought to be something we consider.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I'm generally on the same page with you, and I don't want to deliberate too much. I just, the reason I bring this up is because it's something that I see coming down the pike, and I just think that I would encourage counselors to think a little bit themselves about what has seemed really great, what maybe wasn't, and, you know, if we were to craft a rule on this subject, what would you like to see, or what would you be really opposed to seeing? Just, you know, so that when we have that conversation, it's, we come into this better informed. Okay, so that said, I would like to, we did meet with the resolution against abuse of migrant children, and I'm ready to move that forward for a vote. Should I read it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read it. On that, by the way, before that, I just want to say, Dan, you, Counselor Reese, when you initially offered to read the nuclear one, I was like, no, this is because you submitted it, and so, yes, absolutely, if you don't mind.
Mind you reading it, it's okay.
Okay, but to do this one, okay. Whereas, minor children should never be used as pawns in order to make a statement to adults, and whereas, minor children are vulnerable and unable to protect themselves, and whereas, infants and toddlers need to be nurtured by responsible and caring adults, and whereas, all children need clean food and water, and whereas, all children need a safe and comfortable place to sleep, and whereas, children who are mistreated physically, mentally, or emotionally carry those scars into adulthood, and whereas, all children and teens have the basic human right to be protected and safeguarded from harm, and whereas, children deserve our care and protection, no matter where they come from, or how they got that here, therefore, be it resolved on this 18th day of September 2019, that the East Hampton City Council is calling for the United States government to immediately stop and correct the abusive treatment of migrant children in detention centers.
Form of resolution?
I make that a form of resolution.
The motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Okay, cool. The other one that we worked on is to put a question on the ballot. That was related to the establishment of a municipal light plant. For those who are just tuning in, we've taken two unanimous votes on that so far. It's now up to the voters to ratify it. That's the law, that's the MGL, that's how it's supposed to go. So, the language, this would put the question on the ballot. We currently have it as question four. The reason we do is because we anticipate the Charter, the Home Rule petition, introducing questions one through three. If, for whatever reason, that would not be the case, it would become question one. But I'd read the language to the council. So it says question four, and in parentheses, this question is non-binding. The question says, "Do you vote to ratify the two prior affirmative votes from the City Council authorizing the city to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and maintain in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164 of the General Laws, and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal light plant for all purposes allowable under the law of the Commonwealth, including, without limitation, the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services?" Then, after that, has a summary, which says, "Question four would give the city authority to establish a municipal light plant, which is a city-owned company that can provide utility services, including telecommunications services and systems and internet to households. A yes vote does not obligate the city to establish a municipal light plant, but the city cannot form a municipal light plant without voter ratification of the two prior City Council votes authorizing the exploration and establishment of a municipal light plant. A yes vote would indicate your support of authorizing a municipal light plant; a no vote would indicate your opposition to authorizing a municipal light plant."
Second.
Was that a form of a motion? I make this a form of a motion. Introduce this.
Additional comments, Counselor Reese?
I just wanted to comment, the city attorney, in his comments, was wondering about the word binding. And I think it's important that the idea of a non-binding question be understood by the voters. What that means is, the vote allows the city to create this municipal light plant, but the city is not bound by the vote to do so, should budget restrictions or something happen that this doesn't happen in the near future. In other words, if they vote yes, we don't have to immediately create this plant, we're not bound to do that, but we are given permission to do that at one point. So, I wanted to state that, and I think the word non-binding should be there for that reason. So I don't agree with the attorney on that, so.
For what it's worth, the reason why I introduce this as non-binding is because the only other city that I have seen, like, create a municipal light plant for the purpose of telecom is Greenfield, and on the Greenfield ballot, it said, "Non-binding public policy question", which made me feel that, you know, it's not that nobody's done this, but most of the cities that have these things haven't established gas and electric company, and they're just sort of diversifying their portfolio. So, I wanted to, you know, see where this had already happened, and what they had done.
Any other comments on this topic? Okay, so we had a motion and a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Okay, so, Counselor Reese, if you'd like to take this next one, since it's your resolution?
I want to thank the Rules Committee for approving this three to zero. This went through some, and I want to thank Mary and Sarah for asking me to do this. It was enlightening. There is a large group, a national group, that wants the treaty to be passed that prohibits nuclear weapons. It has a long road ahead of it, but the more cities and towns in this state, and the more states that adopt resolutions like this, send a message, and we need to be vocal about messages. Otherwise, our government doesn't act. They don't act that much, anyway, but it'd be nice if they did. On the bottom of the page, you'll note that there is some language regarding construction of nuclear weapons in East Hampton. We wanted to make it clear, we changed that so that it does not, and Counselor McCray, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, the thinking being that people would, when the original language was proposed, would think that the City Council somehow has authority to stop some company from working on a defense project for nuclear weapons. We do not have that authority. This is recommending divestment, it's recommending that nuclear weapons not be built in East Hampton or parts secured, but this particular resolution also calls on us to support two legislative acts that look into the implications of divesting in nuclear construction in the state, and what that impact would have on jobs, on, you know, the economic development, certain, there's small parts being built, maybe in a million, in a lot of different industries. So those two legislative bills that are before the Senate and the House, respectively, would look into that. And that's one of the main reasons I support this also, is that we're trying to support actions at the state level that would look into the consequences of divestment. Also, the original resolution, before it came to you, had language regarding divestment of East Hampton's finances, which I thought was premature, given that we don't know what that consequence is, and I think the Retirement Board has the ability to invest in certain companies, and we can't dictate to them nor would I want to, at this point. If it happens at the state level, that would be better, anyway, because then we'll find out what it means. But this primary reason for this resolution is to support the treaty. Do I have any questions?
I do. Counselor Reese, I was just looking over your shoulder here, when reading number two, didn't we, as the committee, decide where it says nuclear weapons, products, or materials? Did we decide to strike that, of the concern of a company in East Hampton was making bolts that could have?
I thought we had, I thought it was recommend, this was Counselor Peak who wrote this from your, I don't know, I don't remember.
I thought it was just my concern, where we talk about products or materials, you know, if someone is, the city's producing a bolt that somehow made its way there, would that be problematic?
Yeah, we felt, I, my recollection is that, at the time, we felt it was okay because it says recommends, like, we're not, we're not claiming to have any authority to, like, stop some error.
It's not, right, it's not, we would have to probably do some sort of ordinance, or
maybe even zoning, to actually, like, say what, but, but the, we.
Might just change the recommendation.
If somebody wants to build a plant here, and they're going to work for the defense, this statement is there, they can say, hey, the council's not going to like this.
Yeah. Sure. Okay. Any other?
I'm sorry, I lost track. Has he made the motion?
I did make a motion.
Okay, okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
We could keep going.
No, no. We can, well, certainly, I have. Okay, we can do the comment before the motion, then, Counselor Cottrell.
So, back to what you were saying, President McCray, I fully support this, with the exception that even with the word recommends, I don't like that in there. It gives the illusion that there is some steps we can take to ensure that finances are not invested. Does this kind of make us on, so, let's say, somebody comes in, and we are able to understand that finances out of East Hampton somehow made their way to a nuclear weapon. Can someone sue us? Because we had this, we were, we wrote this thing that said, wherever possible, and we didn't do it?
No, because all it says is, "The East Hampton City Council recommends that the city take these steps."
Right.
A resolution is not binding.
But, but, literally, I mean, the, you know, the city is embodied by our executive, could literally just say, no, I don't feel like it, and, you know, that's kind of that.
If it's non-binding, then what is, so, the point is?
We're stating our opinion, I guess.
Yeah, so the point is that we're basically, I'm going to go on record as saying, that does not work for me, that that's in there. It feels like we're making a, like, I don't, if we're, if it's non-binding, why is it in there? If we don't have to do it, why is it in there? Like, it feels like, if all we're doing is recommending, but we have no governance to figure out if that's true or not, it doesn't, I don't know. I mean, if it's, so, so we're putting in that we recommend that we don't do this, but no one will ever know if we do or not, because there's no governance over it, there's no one checking, right?
And it's just a statement of values, I suppose?
It is a statement of values, and really, to, what you're suggesting is something that I think, if this was a zoning ordinance, or ordinance in general, would be terribly problematic. But this resolution, as all resolutions are, statements of opinion, and, and I don't believe that, because it's non-binding, it's creating any assumption that we have some authority, because we don't. However, saying that, if this is something you want to amend, because you put strongly about it, I think you should do that.
I think, you know.
I'd like a unanimous opinion tonight, I want to say that. So if people are really hesitant because of some language in here, I'd like to hear.
I, I'm just going to go on the record as saying, I'm allowed to ask questions.
Oh, no, no, no.
And this is a concern of mine, I'm asking questions.
Absolutely.
You may or may not have convinced me, but I get to ask the question.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying that I'd like, I'd like your vote, so if we're not going to get your vote, and you want to amend it.
Well, you'll have to wait and find out.
I mean, I think it's really interesting, in that I think this term, we've had more resolutions than I think, probably all the terms I've been on City Council. So it is certainly, and as the discussion has come up earlier, I think it is something this body has to decide what they're comfortable with. And I certainly, as I said, I kind of saw what Counselor Cottrell was saying, we're saying this doesn't have any teeth, but yet, some of the language suggests it does, although we threw recommend in there to make it soften it, I mean, it is, it is confusing. So I think, I think in the future, this is something that this committee needs to look at more clearly. Counselor Sarah?
I mean, I would just echo what's been said, and first of all, I don't disagree with what Counselor Cottrell is saying, but I think it does come back to what the nature of a resolution is, we're resolving to do something, and a lot of these issues, a lot of these documents are, are, in fact, recommendations, they're recommendations to our residents, they're recommendations to our legislature, they're not, but they're not binding, as opposed to an ordinance or zoning law, and I think that they're more of a advocacy, or a moral statement, or the compass, or the presumed compass of the municipality. So, while I respect what my colleague's saying, I think, couched within the nature and the framework of what most resolutions do, I think, I feel like it's okay, but I, at the same time, I understand your concerns.
Let me look, any comments on this one, I want to make sure, okay, Counselor Peak?
Could I suggest that we read it, make a motion, and then if we're going to amend it, that we go through that process?
And have discussion?
And have those discussions at that time?
Okay, I mean, Counselor Reese?
I would amend it right now, because I don't find.
Well, the motion has been made yet.
No, okay, I can. Shall I make a motion? Shall I make the motion?
Sure.
I make a motion. City Council approved the following resolution, calling for the US to join the Treaty on Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Whereas, nuclear weapons cannot be used without catastrophic humanitarian consequences that violate every principle of international law and human morality, and whereas, the continued existence of these weapons poses an intolerable risk to human survival, since they can be detonated by accident, as well as by design, and whereas, the United States, together with Britain, France, Russia, and China, signed and ratified a legally binding commitment more than 50 years ago to negotiate, in good faith, and at an early date, the total elimination of nuclear arsenals, and whereas, the International Court of Justice ruled in their 1996 Advisory Opinion on the legality of nuclear weapons, that the legally binding commitment to negotiate means bringing those negotiations to a successful conclusion, and whereas, in the year 2000, the United States, together with Britain, France, Russia, and China, gave an unequivocal undertaking to 187 other nations that they would fulfill their commitment to accomplish the total elimination of their nuclear arsenals, and whereas, in July 2017, 122 nations adopted a treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons, making it illegal, under international law, to develop, test, produce, possess, stockpile, transfer, use, or threaten to use nuclear weapons, and whereas, once this treaty enters in force, it will be illegal in all countries who are party to this treaty to assist, encourage, or induce, in any way, anyone to engage in any active activity prohibited by the treaty, and whereas, more and more countries will continue to sign and ratify this treaty, including, sooner or later, many key allies of the United States, and whereas, this means the United States will find it increasingly difficult to develop, manufacture, deploy, or justify its continued dependence on nuclear weapons. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the East Hampton City Council recommends that the city of East Hampton take steps to align the city of East Hampton with the UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, such that, one, wherever possible, the city of East Hampton takes steps so that no East Hampton finances are invested in production or of or supply of materials for nuclear weapons, both currently and in the future, and that, two, the City Council recommends that no work on nuclear weapons, or products, or materials for producing nuclear weapons will take place in the city of East Hampton. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city of East Hampton calls upon our federal leaders to sign the Treaty on Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, and to invite the other nuclear armed nations to do likewise, leading to an agreed multilateral pathway for the elimination of all nuclear weapons worldwide. Be it further resolved, the city of East Hampton calls upon, calls upon the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to align with the Treaty on Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons by setting up. up, as a first step, a Citizens Commission to look into the implications of doing so as per H.D. 3239 and S.D. 2157 currently before the state legislature. Be it further resolved that the city of East Hampton calls upon federal leaders and our nation to take immediate steps in the meantime to reduce the threat posed by the continued existence of these weapons and to prevent the possibility of nuclear war taking place by accident, miscalculation, or design by renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first, ending the president's sole unchecked authority to launch a nuclear attack. I like that one. Taking U.S. nuclear weapons off hair-trigger alert, canceling the plan to replace its entire arsenal with enhanced weapons, and leading a global effort to reduce tensions, particularly with Russia, through dialogue, diplomacy, and other confidence-building measures. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to the state representative, Daniel Carey, state senator, Daniel Donald Humerson, U.S. congressperson, Richard Neal, U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, U.S. Senator Edron Markie, and President Donald J. Trump. Signed on the 18th day of September 2009 by the members of the East Hampton City Council. That was a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Now, more discussion. I move that we amend by removing language at the bottom of the page from now therefore be resolved to the city of East Hampton, that entire section, as I have, and I move this to amend the whole resolution so that it's primary focus is the resolution that one wants us to join the treaty against the prohibition of nuclear weapons, which is the primary focus of the resolution, and secondly, that we ask that we support the two, the House and Senate bills currently for the legislation that look at the consequences of divestment. I therefore feel that that section, which has caused some concern, is not necessary to the primary purpose of this resolution, so I move to remove it.
Second.
Motion second, as amendment to remove the section that councilor just referred to. Additional questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So, no, so, okay, so all in favor of that move, okay. So, now we go back to the main, councilors.
Just a question, could you just clarify, could we clarify for the record exactly what, from what word to what word, it's just numbers one and two.
Now therefore be resolved.
And then one and two.
And then one and two, because the next section says now therefore be resolved. So, we jump from.
Okay.
Whereas continued dependence to that. So, that one now therefore be resolved, which refers to sec one and two.
So, that amendment has passed. Now, we have a motion, a second on the original motion. Counselor Derby, you have a comment?
I have a comment on the resolution. So, I wasn't alive during the Cuban Missile Crisis, but I know that that was a, you know, a pretty stressful, informative time for a lot of people. I was alive in 1983, and I saw a movie called The Day After, and it freaked me out big time. And so, you know, this is an issue that I've followed my whole life, and I felt like we were making such great progress, and I can't say how much I support this resolution in a time where people are seriously talking about using nuclear weapons to divert hurricanes and to, and to use small tactical nukes, not only like develop new tactical nukes, but actually use them, which is insanity. And so, I think this is apropos and important, and I can't support it enough.
Initial comments on this main motion, resolution? Okay, all those in favor?
Some in the audience.
Opposed?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the Senate and House bills don't have a D, they're just H and S.
Okay, well, that's minor clarification.
So, we'll correct that for record. Thank you for the clarification. So, we add the, councilor, yes, we add the motion and the second, just again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, before we break from rules, I wanted to just ask, I believe the motion about the abuse of migrant children was going to be sent to our local state representative and state senator and be sent to the governor and the speaker of the House and the president of the Massachusetts Senate, and also to the legislative delegation at the federal level and to the President of the United States. And I just wanted to be sure that that was included. I don't know if we need to, if that was the intention, but it wasn't mentioned.
It's, it's not, that language is not.
It was in, it was asked for in the original, yeah. And it is pretty much standard.
I move that we send the migrant resolution to the aforementioned representatives of the state government.
Second. And the federal government.
And the federal government. Thank you.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Okay, and finally, in rules, councilor Kauf has something to introduce.
Yeah, I won't read the entire resolution, but I did want to just say a couple of words. On January 22nd, 1973, with the Roe v. Wade decision, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled that pregnancy does not negate one's rights to privacy, and therefore the decisions regarding that pregnancy should be free from excessive government restrictions. Today, nearly 47 years later, we are faced seemingly daily with a Senate that enables a regressive and dangerous president to walk back advances in racial equity, LGBTQ-plus rights, and gender equality, including the rights of women, people who are binary, and people who are transgender to have agency over their own bodies. As Roe v. Wade comes under attack at the federal level, we must continue to press forward at the state and local level to ensure that the rights of all are valued, defended, and protected. Right now in Massachusetts, there is a bill, H. 3320 and S. 1209, known as the Roe Act, an act to remove obstacles and expand abortion access. The Roe Act will protect the health, safety, and privacy of young people, ensure medical decisions remain between a patient and their doctor, lead the way to ensuring equitable access to abortion, bring our laws into the 21st century, and reduce the stigma around abortion. Tonight, I'm introducing a resolution that will affirm and demonstrate East Hampton's commitment to reproductive freedom and the right to safe and legal abortion. And so, the resolution is very lengthy, and we will, we'll talk about it more at the public hearing, but it speaks to all of these issues around safe and equitable access to reproductive rights, and it's extremely important more now than ever, and I look forward to having a conversation in the subcommittee and then further in the, I assume we may or may not have a public hearing, but that's up to the Rules Committee to do.
Okay. Do you want to move it to rules?
I will make a motion to move the Roe resolution to the Rules Subcommittee.
Second. Motion second to move the Roe resolution to Rules, questions or comments? Oh, councilor.
I just wanted to make the comment that I did request that this go to the subcommittee. A lot of our resolutions seem to be on the surface rather obvious, and I strongly support this resolution. And I don't want to give the perception that because I wanted to send it to committee that for some reason I question it. That is not the case. I do strongly support our democracy and the fact that we might have minority opinion on a very, it has been in this country, a very controversial and divisive issue. We have to allow for minority opinion, and therefore I do with all of our resolutions that have to deal with strong subject matter, we must allow the public to be informed that this resolution will be presented and be brought to a vote, so I wanted to make sure that we allow for minority opinion. That is in no way meaning that I somehow disagree with the resolution, I do not, but I will strongly support, regardless of my opinion on a resolution, minority opinion being allowed to be brought forward by anyone in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Lynch?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Peg for proposing this. It hits a lot of homes, more than people realize, and inviting me to actually say a few words on it. And to be able to stand here in solidarity with the women of East Hampton in support of the Roe Act, while other states are starting to adopt archaic abortion laws, it's important that Massachusetts stands up and stands out when it comes to supporting the woman's right to choose and have access to safe, legal abortions, regardless of the woman's age, income, or insurance, as the Roe Act states. That is why I support this, the Roe Act and the resolution, and I look forward to being part of the discussions moving forward and learning as much as we can as a community. Thank you.
Initial comments? Okay, so this is to move to subcommittee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Tom, did you want to set a meeting? Because we haven't done that.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about it at times after the meeting. So, I guess, yeah, let's, yeah, let's conclude, and let's talk afterwards.
Okay, try to review, committee, councilor.
I have nothing to report, other than the happy fact that the House did pass our legislative petition, and I don't know, Mr. President, if you want to talk about it now, but we're going to have to meet next week.
We do have a.
Do you want to?
Yeah, we'll have a little bit of time for, crunch, this all has to be, passed by the city council, it'll be on the ballot by October 3rd, so we're going to set a special meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, at 6:00 p.m. immediately following the finance meeting. It should be a very brief meeting, we'll just, this is the only topic that will be on the agenda, but just so, make sure that everything is compliant so that we can have this on the ballot for the November election. I will send you out an email, so you have the official notification of that that is required, but please mark in your calendar Wednesday, January, I mean, November, September 12th, 6:00 p.m. So, if you all show up at different months, it's my fault.
Room one, downstairs. And that may change if the governor, for some strange reason, doesn't sign the act by next week, we'll have to, he's got 10 days to sign it, and my math is correct, I think it's 10, is it 10 business days, or is it 10? God help, but I hope he signs it, sorry.
Okay, so unless there's anything else, I'll hand motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, see you, October 2nd.
So, Tom, we have to have a meeting, because Peg wants to.
We can't sign the.